I'd like to call this Public Caucus Order. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we are here with Jerry Cross, who is the, our representative from the Pennsylvania Economy League and who has worked with the city for the last several years. We have Larry West, the Business Administrator, and Mayor Paige Cagnetti. So we want to thank the three of you for coming tonight. We requested the Pennsylvania Economy League to come to our caucus to round out our discussions on the 2022 budget. So I'll turn it over now to Jerry Cross. And Jerry, if you want to have an opening statement, and then we'll have questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman Gahn. The Economy League, as you mentioned, has been the coordinator, and under state law, we are required to provide a review in assistance with the cities preparing its draft budget as early as October of the fiscal year, and then working through the iterations. And our basic goal is to have the recovery plan, or the exit plan in this case, goals to be reflected in the budget that the city prepares, and it's part of the act. So with that, I'd like to have, I'd like to read into the record at least some of the points that we made in our letter that we provided to the city two times this year. One was on the draft budget itself, and we revised that letter last week, late last week, and early this week to accommodate the November 30 draft that we received. So pursuant to the Pennsylvania Municipalities Financial Recovery Act, which is Act 47, an Act 47 coordinator has a statutory responsibility to review a financially distressed municipality's proposed annual budget. It's a review of the budget. The coordinator is allowed to make necessary modifications to a proposed budget to meet an adopted recovery plan's goals and return it to the municipality with those modifications. We have never had that occasion in Scranton. We have always been in a situation where we work hand in hand with the administration and the council on goals for the coming year. On October 24, 2021, the City of Scranton's Business Administrator submitted a proposed 2022 budget to us for review against the 2022 projections that we had included in the city's amended exit plan. We provide projections as part of our work as coordinator, and they're incorporated in the city's exit plan, which was adopted by this council. Once the Business Administrator submitted the budget to us, the office continued to work on the 2022 budget. As I said, we are, we get the budget in October. We get a draft budget in October, which is really in-cuit budget that is subject to a lot of revisions, but that's what we have to work with to show that the city's goal is going forward in the budget process. We get that budget as of October 18. It's typically a draft budget, and it's typically rough, but it's good enough for us to get some basic direction. But since the city will continue to work on that, the city's, the schedule conflict of our deadline of October, we have a statutory deadline of November 18 to have a final review to the city. However, the city's Home Rule Charter requires a submission of the mayor's budget on November 15. So you can see there's a clash of schedules, so we're typically working on a draft budget. And typically, by November 15, that's when there's, the questions go back and forth between administration, the legislative branch, and things like that. So because of this conflict, we were not able to compare the final budget that you have in front of you for the November 16 letter, which we provided. I'm having a little trouble with my glasses here, pardon me for the fog. But subsequent to the November 15 charter date of submission of the budget, the Business Administrator did provide amended budgets based on the further review of the council and the city administration. We have reviewed those changes as of December 2, 2021, and updated our statutory review letter of November 16. So that's the letter I provided to the council and the administration yesterday. The proposed 2022 budget includes projected revenues of more than $106 million and the same amount of projected expenditures, which is a balanced budget. The draft 22 budget is an improvement over our projections in the amended exit plan, which had a baseline deficit projection of $2 million for the 2022 year. That was based on the baseline trends of the city when we drafted the exit plan three years ago, two and a half years ago. We review this change as a positive change and as a measure of the city's progress towards a continued and sustainable financial position into the future. Now, total 2022 revenues proposed by the cities are higher than our amended exit plan projection. We projected $93 million, the city has $106 million. That's a $13 million difference. We note that the greatest variances from our planned projections were in the inter-fund transfer amounts budgeted for this year and the real estate tax, the gross revenues from real estate. Other variances in categories that were below $1 million, but two budgeted categories, our grocery receipts tax and our earned income tax, are lower than what we projected. So the city is projecting slightly lower revenue than we have projected based on our assumptions for those two tax items. Now, it's important to note that while we were lower in the inter-fund transfers, the difference is largely because the city is including the American Rescue Plan money, $5 million in lost revenue, which could not have been foreseen when we drafted the 2020 exit plan. There was no consideration given to the fact that the federal government would provide lost revenue. Now, there is a significant variance, about $4.2 million less in our plan, the plan's projected real estate revenue for fiscal year 2022 versus what the city has in its 2022 budget. That's a $4 million change, that's a significant change. So we reviewed our assumptions and the current budget. Now, we had based the plan's projections on the then-current, if you remember, back in 2019, 2020, there was a plan to monetize your delinquent tax revenue, so to essentially sell your back due taxes at a discount. The city issued an RFP in late 2019 or so, and that was, when we were doing our projections, that was the, that was the spirit of the times. It was, there was a current assumption that the city would attempt to monetize delinquent real estate taxes during the fiscal year of 2020. A monetization by its nature of delinquent taxes would have meant a reduction in the amount of delinquent taxes received in 2021 and 2022. Remember, you would have sold those, and you would have sold, so people would have not paid 2020, 2019, 2018, you'd only be getting the most recent delinquent taxes. So that's a characteristic of a sale of those delinquent taxes. But during 2020, the city's administration did not complete the sale of the taxes and instead opted to utilize the county's tax claim process to collect delinquent real estate taxes. That's an ongoing process, and we expect that to continue. As far as we know, you're going to continue that into the budget year. The coordinator reviewed the revenue impacts of that tax collection process. Based on our 2021 year-to-date total real estate tax collection received, based on our tracking of that number, the proposed budget amount of $38,800,000 is a reasonable estimate for 2022. Now, total expenditures in the draft budget are higher than our amended plan's projections by $10 million. The greatest dollar variations from the plan projections and the 2022 draft budget were seen in total personnel, which was about a 4.5% increase, or 3.4 million. And then we had non-departmental and departmental expenditures were higher by 4.7 than we had estimated three years ago, or two and a half years ago. And capital spend, which normally, when you project capital spend, you project it at the current year, you go forward, city had some more capital projects. Now, the capital variance from the plan is largely for capital purchases involving public works, refuse needs, you know, capital trucks, and also for engineering for public works, which we did not include in our estimate. That was almost $1 million in engineering. The variance for the departmental and non-departmental expenses is largely from increases in the court awards and contingency line items. The city budgets annually, two unknown factors. One is contingency to cover unseen events, and one is for court awards to cover any unanticipated or anticipated lawsuits that's pending. So the proposed budget accounts for these increased expenditure, and this is an important point. It accounts for increased expenditure, and in accordance with what the exit plan provides, you have provided adequate revenue to continue the provision of vital and necessary services. The budget expenditures are balanced with the estimates of revenues, and we felt that that satisfied the Act 47 statutory requirement of the exit plan's goals of continuing the provision of vital and necessary services. Now, we also looked in our revised budget on the personnel complement, because that became, that became a bigger issue, I think, on, during the budget discussions after we received the draft budget. Now, the proposed 2022 budget includes some increases in the personnel complement over both 2020 and 2021. The amended exit plan that we prepared does not provide for limits on the number of employees. In the old days of Act 47, we could set the number of employees in the city. That's no longer the case, and in fact, the exit plan did not limit the number of employees for the city to hire. However, our projections are based on the 2020 complement of employees. So we only hold, we assume as a baseline that these trends continue, nothing will change. So if you have 495 employees in 2020, we assume no new hirings, because that would assume a policy decision that as coordinator we would not make. We simply project trends going forward. The plan's projections for that period, 20, the period of 2020, God bless you, 2020 to 2023, had assumed that employee count that was unchanged. And however, this is important, I put this sentence in the letter, and I was going to bold it, but I thought that might be a little bit over the top, you know? But let me, let me explain this to you. As coordinator, we are concerned all the time about policy decisions, how they affect the vital and necessary services. So I will say to you that policy decisions that will affect the total complement, when you're looking at the total number of people, you also have to balance that policy decision with the city's requirement and need to provide necessary and vital services to its businesses and residents. Now, I think, most people think vital and necessary services, fire, police, public works. I will say that the coordinator, from our vantage point, the coordinator includes within the goal of provision of vital and necessary services, those personnel that also support fiscal management and other program management duties that will ensure long-term financial sustainability, which gives you adequate managerial capacity. My long experience in the city's coordinator has always been that there was too much of a rush to trim the management side. There was too much of a rush to remove capacity, because capacity removed gives you immediate savings. But it's like losing brain cells. Takes a lot more to learn how to walk when you avoid, you know, than avoiding the accident that takes your ability to walk away from you. You need to maintain adequate managerial capacity across administrations. I'm, I was encouraged by the provision of a financial director. That is a position that we have long said, the business administration suffered under prior policy decisions going back 10 and 12 years ago, and we have seen the results of that decay. You need more and sustainable managerial capacity in this city. And that, of all the parting shots we can give you as we leave Act 47, I would say, don't discount the bean counters, and don't discount the managers that are able to provide for the sustainability of vital and necessary services. You can't have one without the other. It really is a symphony of people working together. Now, Act 47 does provide specific guidelines for me to follow. I don't just wing this on my own. So we have specific guidance to follow to evaluate your budget. It does not permit, however, the coordinator to entertain the evaluation of all potential scenarios. I can't sit down, and I'm not allowed to sit down, and balance needs against wants or virtues against vices. That's your job as a policymaker, that's the administration's job to propose to you, your job to legislate and to approve. So I cannot do that. And I can't evaluate those for the near or distant future that might affect the budget through policy decisions between now and the end of the year or the end of next year. However, at this time, it is our opinion that the city of Scranton is able to meet all of its financial obligations as they come due, and I think that's important. And it is able to provide vital and necessary services to its residents. I have to remind you that Act 47's main goal is to provide resources to maintain payment of debt, payment of personnel, and to provide for vital and necessary services. That's our goal as coordinator. The controversy comes in how you provide those. In conclusion, and this is in our letter, it is our opinion that the city's final submitted draft 2022 budget is, as we received November 30, that was the last one we reviewed, is in compliance with the adopted and amended exit plan's stated financial stability goals. So with that, I paraphrased our letter and gave you some editorial content, and I hand it back to you, Mr. Gahn.
Sure, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. The city is required to submit the draft budget to you, as you stated, no later than 75 days prior to the end of the current fiscal year, which is December 31. Was the city on time in submitting their draft budget to Pell?
The city was on time, close enough for us. We were in constant conversation, and remember, we have, we have a working relationship with the financial office here on our weekly Pell meetings or our bi-weekly Pell meetings. We received the draft spreadsheets, I want to say, in that range. It might have been October 17, 18, 19, 20, I'd have to look, but we were receiving iterations and offering that.
So 75 days prior to the end of the current fiscal year would have been October 18?
October 18, yeah.
October 18, right. You stated in your letter to us on November 16 that you received the draft budget on Sunday, October 24, so that would have been a week late. Is that not correct?
Yeah, I don't know that, yeah, if that's the date it was, that would have been the final, that would have been, what would have been indicated to us is this is our final draft. We do receive spreadsheets and such as we're, as we're working. I'm a little bit more liberal with my definition of a draft budget, because that's so early in October. Most coordinators, the coordinators view that as like an early warning, so the state gave us 75 days. When I sat on the revision panel for Act 47, some coordinators wanted 90 days, and we felt that was unreasonable, that 90 days is, you don't have a revenue, enough experience, you don't have enough, 90 days is just too late. So the legislature gave us 75 days. I'm okay with that 75 days, but I don't expect the fully formed product. So I'm a little bit more, you know, we get, we get a lot of different things at different times. So I put, I put the date that we received the actual, what the administration said that's your, work on this budget, but on the 18th, 19th, we knew, we knew where you were going on a draft budget.
So when, what, what date did you actually receive in the fifth of the afternoon?
Whatever I said in the letter, Mr. Gahn. Did I say the 24th, the 24th?
Sunday, October 24.
Yeah.
Okay. How many drafts or changes were submitted to you once you received that initial budget? You said the initial draft budget was presented to you on October 24, and then changes were made through, I think you say in your second letter, through November 11. So how many drafts and changes were submitted to Pell?
We exchanged emails with the, with the Business Administrator. We, we do a quality, we summarize your expenses based on our database, so we'll take the draft budget and we'll plug it into our, our database. Patty Moorhead, who you know, will do an analysis on that and see the, see anything that jumps out at her, that, that could be a flaw in the city's proposed budget, it could be a flaw in our calculations. She did identify a couple items that were hardcoded, they weren't actual sums that the city had in its spreadsheets. We notified the city of that, and they made those changes. But I, I don't, I'm thinking it may have been four or five at least emails from Patty back and forth to Rebecca and the, and the business office.
So you identified some issues with the budget. We received the budget on November 15, and not going to rehash everything, but obviously there was some, there was a lot of mistakes in the budget. So you didn't identify any of those mistakes in terms of CBA increases not being included, other items that were not technically correct in your initial, in your initial review?
We, we were asked about the CBA, because we pointed out that you don't have an agreement in place today. You don't have, I don't think you, when you say CBAs, I'm thinking fire, police, public works, those are the ones that are open.
I mean the increases that should have been included originally.
Well, you have, you have, well, your, your contract ends this year.
Right, but the increases that were supposed to be included weren't included. So what I'm asking you is, did, for clerical and...
The six months, or?
Yeah, the six-month increase.
Okay. I, I, I don't, I don't know that we caught that, I apologize. That I don't know. I was thinking that we had made a conscious effort, because you obviously have expenditure changes every year when you have the contracts in place, right? You have whatever that is. But because you didn't have a contract, I guess for the next period, the two, three years, Patty may have not picked that up, and I may not have got that either, quite frankly.
Okay.
But ordinarily, Mr. Gahn, we wouldn't include a proposed increase, because that would be presumptuous. So you would, you would go with that.
I know, and that's not what I'm, I'm sorry if I misspoke. That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about what should have been included from prior years, not what, because I understand that contracts haven't been settled yet.
Honestly, we didn't catch it either.
Okay. On, you stated on page four of your letter to council that Act 47 provides, and you just mentioned it before, specific guidance for the coordinator to evaluate the city's proposed budget. Can you explain how you review the annual budget, take us through that process? What exactly does the city give you in terms of documentation, who you work with in the city, and what that process looks like?
We, we receive, we receive from the city working files that mesh with our working files. We have a large database going back, obviously, close to 30 years. The city will give us what they tend to give you, but in a PDF form, and we don't like that. We kind of ask the city to give us everything in Excel, so we see things in the raw form. As, as, we don't see the, we don't see the finished budget, we don't see a final budget. We work with the raw numbers so that we can integrate them into our database. And then we do the, we do an analysis based on our departmental categories, on the, there's the categories, there's the departmental categories, and then we look at the trends for all those. So Patty will summarize those, and I think we summarize them, to give you an idea what the summarization looks like. The table in the back, if you can imagine that, that is, that's, that's a boiling down of your budget, and we run that every year, that same format. So we'll look for trends, things that are missing, revenues that we don't agree with, you know, perhaps there's some revenue items here that we thought maybe were overinflated. On expenditures, we look for things, obviously, the six-month hangover on the, on the budgets is an exception, but we look at the healthcare increases, what we see in other municipalities, is the city adequately budgeting that, or are they suppressing expenses, those sort of things. The process we look at is financial sustainability. In other words, you can have the policy discussion about how you're going to pay for these things. We want to make sure that you're paying for things and have the fiscal wherewithal to do it. Because Act 47 tells me I have to guarantee the city's ability to pay debt, pay its personnel, and provide for vital and necessary services.
So it's, it's you and Patty Moorhead, and Patty Moorhead, I know Patty, but what is her title again?
Patty's our Director of Financial Analysis.
Okay, so it's you and Patty that works with the administration on the budget?
Yeah, typically Rebecca and the Business Administrator.
On page two, and you mentioned it in your opening statement, you talk about the delinquent tax collection revenue. I think I said this on Thursday when we, or asked a question about it on Thursday when we, when we last met with the mayor and the Business Administrator. I have concerns about this number.
Which number is that, Mr. Gahn?
This is the delinquent tax collection number that went from, originally it was submitted at two, roughly $2.3 million, and now in the, the version that we received, the latest version is $4.45 million. Now, I understand, because I got the numbers from the, from the county, that to date we've collected about $4.7 million. So I understand that. But my concern is that we are now in negotiations with the county to, because there's been a dust-up about some of the terms of the agreement. And is that a realistic projection to collect $4.5 million next year? Because I, I look back at what the Single Tax Office collected in 2018 and 2019, before the county took over. In 2018, they collected about $1.7 million along with NRS, and in 2019, they collected about $1.7 million. So it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the city may not want to use the, the current aggressive approach that the county takes through their lean process. So, you know, isn't it a stretch to say that we'll collect the same amount of money? I look at what the Federal Reserve may do with raising interest rates. Are we going to expect that same amount next year? It just seems like a stretch to me.
Let's, we'll talk, let's talk inside baseball a little bit. We missed on our projection of real estate. We kind of provide, we kind of pride ourselves on our, our ability to at least predict real estate and other relatively normal taxes. And we, we had a lower real estate number in our exit plan. And as I said, that was dependent on some factors that didn't come true, which was selling the delinquencies. The reason you were willing to sell delinquencies is because you had so much delinquencies. You had a large overhang. When we had to verify to ourselves, remember, part of our process is verifying, how did we miss so badly, or is the city padding a number? Patty and I sat down, Fred Reddick and I sat down also, Fred's one of our subcontractors, and we looked at the revenue numbers. And Patty was put on the hot seat, said, Patty, explain to me why I don't call out, in other words, I wasn't wrong, the city's padding their numbers. Patty ran the delinquencies, she ran the history of the delinquencies, and she, I'm confident that you're going to have $38.8 million. The numbers Patty showed me is that your delinquency curve is this way, starting in 2020, and that was before the county. Remember, the, the city was changing its county, its tax collection process a few years ago, Mr. Gahn, wasn't it? We hired NRS, we became much more aggressive in our delinquencies, and you had a large overhang.
So I have 2018, this is what the county collected so far this year, broken down. 2018 and prior, they collected $677,319.33. 2019, about $1.7 million, and 2020, about $2.3 million, that comes out to $4.7 million. So I understand what you're saying, but my concern is, based on what's going on with the city and the county right now in this agreement, I'm concerned, I don't know if anyone else on council is concerned, that we may not see that level of aggressiveness based on conversations that have taken place and have, have taken place publicly as well in the newspaper, that the county was too aggressive, the lean process, they may not want to use the, the same lean process. So someone, correct me if I'm wrong, but explain to me how we can have that same level of collection next year if we're not, there's a potential that we're not going to use the same methods that we used this year through the county.
We, I put it in my letter, and I think I put it in my presentation, we are going to assume the continuation of that arrangement. But I also assume the city has an incentive to not allow people to remain delinquent for a long time. One of the biggest problems in this city was the inability to do judicial sales for years. And people in Scranton realized, well, I shouldn't say people in Scranton, some people in Scranton realized that they could delay payment of their real estate taxes. They couldn't delay payment of a light bill or a water bill, but they could delay payment of their real estate taxes. And but for the public exposure of your name in the paper, if that, the delinquencies were piling up. So for the city to backtrack and not be tough on delinquents, I think is a policy mistake. So you have to be of the mindset that most people are paying their taxes for current services. 911 doesn't ask you your status of your tax payment when they dispatch vital and necessary services. Your policy decision should be to be as tough as possible on delinquent taxpayers. I'm assuming this policy you've had, which has been successful, is as tough as you're going to get, short of, you know, taking people's homes in a, in a very aggressive judicial sale. If I'm wrong, you're not going to get that revenue target. Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor.
On Thursday, Attorney O'Brien discussed the MCTLA and Retsel differences, and I would refer you back to his comments that the difference of, the difference of aggressiveness is actually not that material, should not be that material, should we work with, continue to work with the county on a Retsel basis instead of the MCTLA?
Mr. Gahn, can I just briefly?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Mr. Cross, Kevin, I want to meet you. I just want to follow up on this point, because I know several members of council have expressed concern to me on the change in the projected revenues from delinquent, collection of delinquent taxes. And so we just need assurances from professionals like you that you are comfortable with these projections. So, so I understand that the budget that was submitted to you on October 24 had a projection of approximately $2.3 million in collection of delinquent taxes. The version that was submitted to you a few weeks later went up to about $4.2. So you had, you raised no concerns with regard to the $2.3? You could, just let me finish.
Sure.
Because you, you raised no concerns with regard to the... Because you raised no concerns with regard to the projection of the 2.3 million, and now you're saying you have no problem with the 4.2. You can understand the concern the council has with, you know, we're basing our expenditures on the receipt of these revenues. So can you please just reconcile that for us one more time? You know, we understand you've been involved in the finances of the city for a long time. We need assurances on that from you.
My discussion with Patty of our staff was centered on the change, and we had received the more recent numbers. And I think, I think we made a point in our letter that based on the year-to-date collections, we were comfortable with that delinquency. Because remember, we get numbers typically 30 to 40 days late. We'll see August numbers, beginning of October, end of September, beginning of October. So in between that time, Patty might have been working on August numbers or the city. But when we drill down on that, I say, based on the 2021 year-to-date, which is the date of the submission of this letter, total real estate taxes and what you received to date based on current and delinquent, we think 38 million, or the delinquency amount, which is the difference here, is reasonable.
And you say that with the understanding that the 4.7 or whatever that's been collected by the county does not, is not exclusively 2020 real estate taxes, includes 2018, 2019, 2020? You understand that a lot of that has been collected, so with that understanding, you still feel comfortable in making that, what is a significant jump in revenues?
For the 2022 year, I am. Based on our experience and the data we have in front of us, you have, I think, an aggressive policy on delinquents. I think people will get that message. I think you'll have an increase in currents because of that. They're going to balance each other out. Your collection rate of real estate, I apologize, I don't know the current one, but the city's collection rate, that is what you, what is paid in current taxes and not held over the following year in delinquent, has been improving. I know we had discussions a few years ago about going from 87 to 88 to 89, and you might even be at 89 or 90 on this budget. I don't remember. But it's a two, it's both sides of the coin. I agree with you, you're going to have less delinquents, but you might have more current cash flow coming in. And you could have a total miss of 38 million, but I won't know that until later this year. And that's part of your fiscal monitoring. But as of today, and I'll sit here next year, say we hit it or we missed it.
Well, you won't be here next year.
Well, I still live in Wilkes-Barre, you call me up and yell at me if you like.
Now, do you know, or Larry or Mayor, the mayor, do you know how much is still out there to collect from 2020, 19, and 18? How much is outstanding? Like, how much is still out there to collect?
Do you have that from Single Tax?
I don't have the number handy.
Single Tax has that number here, Larry.
I don't have the numbers handy, but I'll get them for you if you'd like.
Okay.
So the year-to-date 2021 by September 30th, which is when we would have been putting together the numbers in October and early November for the budget, the collection, you can see it, you can see it in the updated document for the revenue detail. The year-to-date on 9/30 was just over 2 million. So you can see where, when we were putting the budget together at that point, we would have submitted a more modest conservative number. Recalculating, looking back and recalculating that number, a month later, we had $4.5 million. So it's not, we're not basing numbers out in thin air, we're looking at the year-to-date, looking at the market. I think the, we do think, as I stated last week, that the real estate market will continue to be very good. You know, to Mr. Cross's point, you know, maybe the projection we have of 23.2 million for real estate versus 4.5 million for delinquent, maybe those, maybe when we get to this point this year, those shift a little bit. A budget is a projection, it's a plan for spending. So, you know, if we're not exactly perfect, like Mr. Cross said, we'll be back here. But I do, I don't have the numbers of what is outstanding, but I do think, again, whether we are collecting under Retsel or MCTLA, I do think people have gotten the message that we're serious about collecting, that certainly isn't going away. And the difference between those two policies is not so significant that I don't, that we should miss this target.
Larry did, Mr. Gahn, Larry did show me this, and I recognize some of this from our spreadsheets, but this is from the auditor, because we do use audited and non-audited. Larry's pointing out to me that in, the one number, 2017, was about $1,006 on delinquent. According to the auditor in 2018, you had 3.4 million in delinquent, and 2019, you had 4.1. So there is a trend, and that is, it goes from 1.6 to 3.4, right around the time when we said there was a change in policy of the city for delinquents. The non-audited 2020, which was, remember, there was a grace period and everything with COVID, the auditor was saying, well, I'm sorry, the city's saying, non-audited, there was 3.9 million. So the trend is that way. That's, those are the numbers from the audit on delinquent. So depending on how you assign the year of collection, that trend seems to be where you are this year.
And when do we expect to have an agreement with the county on the collection of, because, I mean, as we all know, at one point, it seemed like it was, you know, we were going to have to go with somebody else.
Yep, the attorneys are working, are going back and forth between the county and the city on an updated agreement. It's an active process.
Anybody else have any questions?
So as of last year, we spoke about a creeping structural deficit. We had a 1% increase in our revenues compared to a 3% increase in our expenditures. And last year, with some of the positions and other things that have been added to the budget, it would have added probably about another 1%, so it would have been about a 4% compared to 1. I do have some of the same concerns this year. When looking at this budget, we are seeing some more positions added, and I know you're saying there's a balance between what is needed in the city and what can be afforded, and I do understand that. We are looking at some of these fluctuating numbers, and even with this, you're saying with our collection rates and, you know, delinquencies coming in, we will taper off at some point in time. Do you have any concerns with adding, you know, another percentage point or two in expenditures moving forward when some of these collections are going to taper off over the next two, three years?
Well, I think in our letter, we did indicate that notwithstanding the higher real estate tax, we do explain, in fact, we say that, notwithstanding the change in collection practices and the higher revenue, the coordinator's view of the city's future real estate tax revenue remains one a concern. That's why I'm saying that your 38.8 million for next year, you know, we'll buy that, given what we see year-to-date. But we have said this consistently, you have no growth in your tax base, and some years you are negative, and over, in historical terms, you've lost taxable value, which coupled with the loss in purchasing power, the city actually receives a lot less in real estate tax revenue because the city was negligent in keeping pace with the millage, because that's all you can do. So I share your concern that this picture of the city coming out of distress is a nice thing. Our recommendation to the secretary, we quoted in our letter, we truly believe, last year you could have come out of Act 47. We believe that this year, you should come out of Act 47 a month from now. What we also believe is, you will be leaving Act 47 to be a normal Pennsylvania city. And to be a normal Pennsylvania city means your expenses grow 3%, 4%, and 5% a year while your revenue stagnates, if you're lucky, at 2% or less. To give you an example, the ARP money, the federal guidelines, assume that your revenue grows 4% a year. If you collected the mayors of Pennsylvania, they would throw a party if they got 4% a year every year. But the federal government, looking at the totality of the country, that's your average revenue growth. In Pennsylvania, you don't have that. So you're going to exit Act 47 and become a normal city, which means by definition, your revenue will not keep pace with your expenses. So the answer to that is, reduce expenses, which I caution, reducing expenses haphazardly and jeopardizing the vital and necessary services, or making sure citizens understand the services provided by the city far exceed their neighbors, far exceeds the value they get, the cost they pay, is far less than the value they receive in services, and make sure that you're able to keep providing that. Because it's a false bargain for you to say, I kept your taxes low, but I gave you lousy services in return. So I share your concern about that. It's not a rosy picture. It's just a heck of a lot better where we've been than we've been in the last 20 years.
Thank you.
I just want to follow up on that one quick, because that's one of my questions, too. You mentioned how the federal government calculates revenue growth. This year, we have five, a little over 5.1 in ARP loss revenue into our budget. You know, if you were to just take out all capital improvements, that's 3.5. So that's 1.5, you know, and change that we're basically putting in, that's not going towards capital improvements. So is that then sustainable then, you know, going forward by plugging this loss revenue into our budget?
Our recommendations are on the ARP money. The use of that is to take the loss revenue first, because the Treasury is still not, as of today, I don't think they have final regulations for you to use on anything else. A lot of our clients are, would like to spend money on capital, they're just not sure what's going on with it. The loss revenue will give you a cushion and will help you build a fund balance, and the fund balance policy that you have before you is a step towards managing that. But ARP money is one-time revenue, just like the sewer sale was one-time revenue, just like the Parking Authority Resolution was a one-time thing. Take advantage of those where you have them. Don't assume it's continuing revenue, don't spend it like it's continuing revenue, but use it how you should use it, which is to address current needs. And I think the use of the $5 million in the ARP money and loss revenue, we're recommending to our clients to do that, so you maintain some sort of fund balance. The city is really, Kyle, you know from our meetings, we have a level of fund balance now, that at the end of the year, we're not begging workman's compensation money from L&I to make our MMO. The finance director's not going to the bank on December 28th to pay the MMO and hope it clears, because that was the, they were able to cobble together enough money. We didn't start counting payrolls in August to see when we would run out of money in December. A fund balance makes all that possible, and you really need to be thinking of integrated budgets that give you a balance, a surplus at the end of the year. It'd be nice if this budget had a surplus, okay, but it's a balanced budget. So I'm concerned that we use one-time money to plug deficit holes, but I don't think you're doing that here. I think you're using the ARP money to help build a fund balance and maintain your fund balance.
All right, thank you. And then just another question I have is on the payroll prep tax.
Yeah.
Although not ideal, do you see any downside to the school district not coming along with the city?
Well, I do. I see a downside in confusion. I think you're perpetuating the inequity inherent in that business privilege tax, particularly with the school district's heavy reliance on service taxes, five mils. You know, it's a little disingenuous to, the city has a uniform rate for retail, wholesale, and other items. The school district has this variable schedule, and five mils on service is, I think, it's high. So you're going to have this disconnect between the city giving a quarter of a percent of payroll prep tax on payroll and the school district levying a different basis of collection on grocery receipts, which some people think is an outmoded way to tax people. The concept was, the more money you bring in, the more money you make, and that's never been, it hasn't been true for decades. So I think there's a real tax policy problem in the city, and I would hope that the school district is waiting to learn from your experience with payroll preparation and then make the switch. Because I don't think it's ideal that we have two different forms of taxation on two different tax bases, but on the same population, which is the mercantile and employment class.
But would you foresee any negative effects on the city's revenue by doing it alone?
Pardon me, Kyle, I didn't...
Would you foresee any negative effects on the city's revenue by doing it alone? Or is it...
No, I think, I think, I think the virtue of the payroll prep tax is that you have better enforcement, better collections, because it's current with the payroll, payroll tax mechanism, the normal payroll tax mechanism. So I think, I think the move the city's making is better for the city in the long run, as far as enforcementability, collectability, predictability by the prop, by the business owner. You know, they're doing it in real time, they're not escrowing a percentage of their business for payments next year, or accruing it, I should say. So other than the hiccups and the headaches you're going to have whenever you start something new, and I would hope you have patience to see it through and not use it as a political gamesmanship, but there's going to be bumps in the road, but I think at the end of the day, it's a better, it's a better move for the city.
All right, thank you.
I just regret the dual taxation.
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Any other comments?
I would, will say that I'm glad to be here after all 16 years, and no matter how pointed the questions are, it's still fun to come to Scranton. It's, I think that this is an example of branches of government that understand their role and not afraid to ask hard questions and not to log roll so that we have political goals met, but rather take an honest look at each other's duties and responsibilities and get that work done. There was times in this city when coming to council was a circus. You understand what I mean? I'm happy to be part of this process. I'm happy to debate our conclusions with your conclusions. My track record speaks for itself, and I hope that this budget is a solid one, I expect it to be, and I hope that future budgets are composed in the same way, a give and take, discussion. A little animosity doesn't hurt, but continued animosity is not good. Once you make a decision and settle on something, go for it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Mr. Cross, and Mr. West. Have a good night. We'll take a five-minute recess, and then we'll start our regular meeting.